Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the April 15th, 2025 meeting of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Amelia, do we have any public comments today?
We did not get any requests for public comments.
Okay, y'all have reviewed the minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions, discussion? I'd move, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Have a motion second? I'll second. Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
You.
Mr. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Prince.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Okay, new business H-25-007. Amelia, will you take it from here and introduce the applicant, please?
I will, thank you, sir. 346 East Main Street. Applicant is Michael Chevis, representing the Chevis Construction Company. Is requesting review for the replacement of gutters in damaged areas of faces and soffits for an existing single-family residence. Property is located on the southwest corner of East Main Street and South Main Street. The subject property contains approximately .60 acres and is developed with a single-family dwelling with water zone and appeals approval for a bed and breakfast. This house is listed on the National Register of Historic District Places as the Bern Roberts House. Property is on RS 15, Single Family Residential District and local HI Historic Zoning Overlay District. It is also located in the CCO. The Queen Anne Style House was constructed circa 1913. In October 2024, administrative approval was given to replace existing architectural asphalt roof shingles with the same material. In the October HCC meeting, the commission approved to replace the gutters and downspouts. During installation of the new roof and gutter system, extensive rock damage was revealed. February 5th, 2025, a special meeting was held to review a plan to replace the gutter system and replace the freezey board, soffits, and fascia around the entire perimeter. The owner, Ms. Brenda Girard, has since decided to install a different type of gutter system for the repairs of the home, which need approval from the commission. The applicant, Michael Chevis, is now requesting review for repairing, replacing, and restoring the Victorian hidden rock gutter cornice structure for the upper cornice levels of the residence to match and preserve the architectural features. They will replace all gutter areas with gutter guard painted to match existing. They will replace the freezey board, the soffits, the fascia around the entire perimeter with painted red grandis wood from Sledge Craft to match existing. And they will replace all modellions with paintable architectural depot product and painted to match the existing. And they will replace the downspouts and round burnished slate color downspouts as shown in the exhibits in your agenda packet. Second floor curb photographs of the home as it exists today, photos of the rot damage, product information, and photos of the areas of work were included in your agenda material. The applicant is here today to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, very well. Let's open it up for discussion. Any questions?
Do we have a series of photographs that we could see that are shown in our documents to the audience as well, if that's possible?
Yeah. Can you, there we go. As you can see, there's several areas of the second floor where there's damages on the gutter systems. This is what they revealed when they removed a portion of the roofing for the gutter area. This is the way it looks around the whole perimeter of the house. And then this was a photograph that showing exactly where he's going to put the dura gutter. And then what he can't do with dura gutter, he will do with the red grandis wood.
Okay. I recall when we talked about this last, they were previously talking about installing kind of a standard gutter inside the hidden gutter area and putting a polyurethane foam underneath it. Could you kind of lay out how you're changing the plan and what new materials you'll be using inside of that?
Yes, I can, thank you, and thank you for having me today. The previous plan of repair just didn't match with the architectural details of the existing house. What we're planning to do is to actually tear off all of that rotten cornice work that includes the hidden gutter. And in the photos, you can see that the outer portion of that cornice structure has a crown feature. That crown feature will now become the dura gutter. So we'll be actually shrinking the size of the cornice just a little bit because that the trough that's featured in that structure right now is very wide. It doesn't need to be that wide. So we're going to shrink it proportionally and then also we're going to build the roof down so that that roof will not empty into that huge trough, but now empty into the new dura gutter product.
And the dura gutter, is that like a rubber roofing sort of?
No, it is a shaped aluminum gutter. It is a heavy gauge aluminum gutter system, and it has an OG profile that will match the OG profile that you see from the ground now. But it's a true gutter system.
Okay.
That was, it was developed for this very purpose.
Nice. And I take it it has the capacity for the water that will be shed?
Yeah, it's the equivalent of a little over typical six-inch K-style gutter, yes.
How deep is the guttering system now as far as the width?
The gutter system now is, I'd say about 10 inches.
No, I mean the full architectural package of it. From where the roof comes down to where it sticks out, how far is that?
It's about 20 inches.
And how far will it be when you're done with the proposed approach?
Be closer to 18.
So two inches difference?
Yes, sir. It'll be negligible, the difference. But in order to get that roof plane to drop the water to shed from the roof and drop into this gutter, I need to shrink it just a little bit.
But there could be a curve, I mean the roof comes down, then like a shoulder, and then it drop in to keep, maintain the 20 inches?
We could do that, yes.
Are you, when you, when you're done with your demolition, there'll be the roof coming down to the wall, the gutter system will be gone, and the outriggers that hold it up will be totally removed, I'm assuming?
The outriggers that are no longer viable, we will be taking those out. The ones we can still use, we'll leave those in there.
All right, and so then you're going to replace the ones that are not viable with new outriggers?
Yes, sir.
To hold the system up?
That is correct.
They're beautiful to look at, but they're a problem to maintain, and I fully understand that.
The hidden gutter system, yes.
Any further discussion, questions? Looks like an awful good project to make.
And the spacing of the modellions will be the same?
It'll be exactly the same.
Everything's the same?
We won't change that. We'll maintain the spacing because we're not taking some of the modellions down. We'll want to leave those up.
Would it be possible to put up a sample section of it, say three feet or so, four feet, and let Amelia's group look at it before you go crazy doing the whole thing?
Absolutely.
I think that would be best, just to make sure we're all on the same page, that there's not some surprise that we're not thinking about. Amelia, would that be acceptable, that y'all could look at it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we do modeling all the time, so it's not a problem for us.
Will we be interrupting the approval process any that way, will we?
Well, it'd be easier to tear it all off at once and then just get going, but it might delay it a few days, yes.
Well, I think what you could do here today is you would approve the application as submitted pending approval by staff of the finished product, and then assuming that there's no issues there, then we could proceed forward.
Very good.
Can we amend that to say of the model?
Oh, absolutely. You can amend, say whatever you like, absolutely. Yes, sir. It'll just depend on whoever makes the motion, just, you know, if you could just make sure that your language is specific as to what you'd like the approval to be pending upon.
Applicant okay with that?
I am okay with that, yes.
Brenda?
The materials, the actual dura gutter is a boutique.
Step up. Thank you.
The dura gutter product is actually a boutique product that'll have to be shipped in from Maine, so you would be asking Mr. Chevis to do a model using a material other than the dura gutter.
I can probably overnight enough samples to create a model.
We can request that, yes.
Yeah, I still think you need to do a model, just so that you were happy with what happens to it, instead of having all put up there, then you don't care for it. I think it's in your best interest.
Thank you.
Okay, motion with that contingency?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve as designed, as enumerated in the documents, with the exception that there be a model for mock-up, I should say mock-up, to look at and get final approval to then completely go.
Final approval by staff after the model?
Yeah, by staff, administrative approval.
How about second?
Second.
Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next new business H-25-009. Amelia?
Thank you again. This is for 443 East College Street. Mr. Brad Chambers is requesting review for a remodel of an existing multifamily dwelling unit. This property is located on the north side of East College Street, about halfway between Highland Avenue and Mainy Avenue. The house is one-and-a-half-story vernacular clapboard style craftsman house with a front shed dormer, steep gabled roof, and wraparound porch. The subject property contains approximately .27 acres and is developed with illegally nonconforming multifamily use in a single-family zone. The property is on RS 8, Single Family Residential, Historic Zoning Overlay, and City Core Overlay. The house was, is a contributing structure, and it was constructed approximately 1925. I found a couple of different references. One said it was 1910, one said it was 1925, so I cautioned on the side of the error and went with the older date. You all received a presentation from the applicant in your, in your agenda packet. Photographs as the home exists today, proposed alterations and product information, and historic guidelines for alterations were also included in the agenda package for this project. The applicant is in attendance today in order to answer any questions the commission may have regarding their request. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing 2,975-square-foot four-plex structure and introducing changes and some general maintenance. We will go through all of these. I will do an overall of all the proposed changes, and the commission will have, will review and have a vote on each item as necessary after I go through the changes. During our pre-application meetings with Mr. Chambers, I expressed concerns about several of his requested changes due to the fact they do not meet the historic guidelines, and some of these things staff would not be able to support. But however, Mr. Chambers' desire was to present his proposed changes to the commission for their review, and ultimately, it is your decision. He would be replacing existing wood siding. He's going to replace that with an LP smart siding. Replace two front wood windows under the front porch. Remove the metal staircase on the east side of the house. Remove the door from the second floor on the east side of the house and replace it with a vinyl window. Remove the existing door and steps on the east side of the first floor. Introduce a brick water table around the house. Install new gutters and downspouts at the corner of the porch. Remove the window on the front right side of the porch and cover it with the siding. Replace the front door and replace roofing. Porch remodel includes removing the west side of the wraparound porch. Replace the west side wood window to a double-hung vinyl window. Remove the door on the west side under the porch and cover it with the siding. Remove rectangular stained glass window on the front porch and cover it with siding. Remove front entry steps and side bolsters and replace with brick steps. Add brick skirting around the porch. Replace the porch columns. Replace the existing porch floorboards with either treads or concrete. Replace porch ceiling with tongue-in-groove wood. Install electric front porch lights. Replace all windows on the sides and the rear of the home with double-hung vinyl windows. Then the house maintenance that could be done administratively is to replace the 16-inch fascia board and soffits around the porch. Replace six-inch trim board at the roofline. Remove and replace both brick chimneys. And the rear dormer, he is proposing to expand on the back of the house. When it gets to that dormer portion during the conversation, the applicant would like to speak with you all on some parameters possibly of what he could do with that back, even though it's not visible. He's afraid some angles it would be visible if he goes too far, so I will let him explain that when that time comes for that particular part of the presentation. As I mentioned, Mr. Chambers did do a presentation on the project. This is the house as it exists today. He has also put in here some information from our zoning guidelines and procedures that we have. I hope everybody was able to read through the majority of all of these prior to the meeting. There was one he wanted me to specifically point out. By choosing to renovate this house rather than demolish it, we're preserving its historic value, an irreplaceable piece of our community heritage. This effort stabilizes the structure against further decline, enhancing its worth as both the cultural and economic access and fosters civic beauty. The community will directly benefit from the joy and results, a revitalized landmark that reflects its original 1925 character, made possible through creative restoration This was another one. The renovation stabilizes the house by addressing structural decay, enhances its value as a historical and economic access, and fosters civic beauty by restoring its original design and adding some modern additions. He is not only preserving its integrity, but also creating a visually harmonious landmark that elevates the aesthetic character of our community. He also put some information in here about a foundation repair, structural analysis by American Structural, Inc. That was just basically, in his words, cut and paste from the original document that he received on that. Then there were some pictures included on that, inside and out. He put in here some information about low-rent housing and how it increases neighborhood crimes. These are some projects that his company has done in the downtown city core overlay. One of them is in the historic district. And the one in the center, as I put in your comments, that one was planned and changed. I think the first revision was in 20, the house revision, I think, was 2022, and then he added the garage in 2024. I believe that is correct. This particular house was a contributing structure, and we had our survey done last year. It is no longer a contributing structure due to the changes that were made with the shutters, the columns, and the windows. Oh, I mean, sorry, the columns, the windows. There was one more. I apologize. I'll get to it when I go through my individual ones. This is the drawing that was produced for this project. There are some questions that we will need to go through about the columns. There's currently five columns on the house as it stands today. Taking off the left-hand side of the wraparound porch, I don't know that the five columns are going to fit on there, but this is his vision for what he would like to do with this house. These are the products he's wanting to use, and we will go through each one of those in the presentation. Again, this is the house as it stands today. All right, so the first one that we'll talk about is replacing the five-inch reveal wood siding with LP smart board wood siding with a seven-inch reveal.
Brad, you want, Mr. Chambers, come to the podium, tell us who you are, please?
Hey, my name's Brad Chambers.
Okay, what are we starting with? Amelia, I'm sorry, this is.
Replacing the existing reveal wood, five-inch reveal wood siding with LP smart board wood siding with a seven-inch reveal.
Any comments, questions?
Could you explain what LP smart board is?
Just wood siding.
And what would be the finish of the wood? Smooth or rough?
Smooth.
Why are you going to seven-inch to save money on siding?
No, I mean, that's just, it's not really about saving money, it's just how it weighs out when they're eight-inch boards.
But the current is five.
Right, but that's not the same material.
Well, I understand it's not the same, but you could get the same look and do a five-inch reveal, could you not?
I hadn't looked into that.
So was it economics on the eight-inch board versus?
Yeah, I think they come in eight, and they got an inch.
Sure.
With the inch over.
So what we're talking about is instead of five inches reveal, a seven-inch reveal, right?
Yeah.
Is that, does that maintain historic integrity?
No.
Because there were no size boards like that back then, or?
Well, the boards that are on there now are five, and he's asking for seven, so it doesn't matter if they were 13-inch boards originally. Right now, they're five.
Okay.
Did, I didn't catch in the beginning, was this a contributing structure currently? Got a long way to go, so this is an interesting place to start because some of the other factors that we're going to discuss will lend to the whole conversation of contributing and not contributing and, you know, like altering the porch completely. Was that porch original that wrapped around to the side? These staircases, I'm sure, were added. This is a little bit of cart before the horse for me, a little bit.
We could proceed through and come back. I could just mark it and say come back.
I don't necessarily want to change the direction of things, but if we start with the siding, I honestly feel like the material change is something we could consider, but the reveal, if our goal is to stay with contributing structure here and try to maintain that look as best we can, I mean, one of the first things we need to get to is probably maintain that reveal. And then we can consider how the other things might affect this. And I'm not, that's not a motion, I'm just trying to start this conversation.
Would you prefer to go to the porch section first and go through all of that first?
Well, I defer to our chair, but.
This is important, this, it is. I hate to, I hate to skip it, I hate to leave it, but if we are going to.
We'll come back.
Be unable to, how important is it to you, Brad, that we, in what order we go? Okay, skip it then, let's go back.
Okay, I'm going to go to the porch remodel. I debated going back and forth of how to, whether to put the other stuff first and the porch. So there's a lot of changes, so.
There's a lot here.
If I could lead with a question then, what's the intent of removing that left-hand section of the porch? What goal do you accomplish by removing that portion of the porch?
Two aesthetically, I think it looks better, and the second reason would be to eventually put a driveway on that.
Do you intend to continue using this as multifamily?
I do.
Okay. And will there be four units?
There will be.
Okay. Any reason to believe that porch was altered at any time, or is it original?
I don't believe any of it is original.
Those fluted columns probably, I believe your date of teens are probably more accurate than twenties, and that's appropriate for that timeline. These are going to, it's a peer-built house with stacked bricks, which is more in line with things we see downtown in the teens. Without any evidence, I wouldn't see why those columns are not original.
Didn't you tell me the front porch had been remodeled?
He replaced it. In 2003, the owner at that time came before the board, and he had to make repairs to the porch, and he replaced like for like.
I would pose that the east side that's now filled in was probably an open-air porch wraparound like the west side.
I would say, at one time it was, but as far back as I could look in our GIS, it was there, so that goes back to 1995. And I believe from the information that I have read about this house in the past, that it definitely, that side area was added based on the floor area within the house to make it a triplex.
Provide access for more apartments, and so that, you're saying the east side that's filled in in this picture?
Correct, this picture that's showing right now.
I mean, just like the stair was added to get to the attic apartment?
Correct.
Fill-in on the east side was all to facilitate going from a single-family to multifamily. Should we keep going then, then come back and individually vote on? I mean, we're going to be voting roll call on a lot of individual items.
What's the question with the porch? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was looking at notes.
Well, there's still other things. You wanted to either do it in wood flooring or concrete, and you wanted to fill in this, take the lattice work out and put bricks in, replace the columns. What would the new columns be?
MDF, like exterior wood.
Are they going to be fluted like these are?
They're going to be the same size. Yes, sir.
Same size and fluted?
Hmm, I wasn't planning on fluting them.
Well, part of the heartburn, at least for me, and I won't speak for the rest of the commission, is that this is a contributing structure, correct, Amelia?
Correct.
And if we keep changing it in small little bits, it's going to no longer be contributing.
I mean, that's where I was headed. I commend you for wanting to take on this project. No doubt, this house needs a lot of attention, but we have to think about what we're tasked with here. This is a contributing structure, and the desire to take off a portion of this original porch feature just to facilitate another driveway is difficult. That's... The reasoning is, it's hard to... I mean, that's not creating a financial burden on you. That's... I don't see any reason why we could or should approve the demolition of part of this original, because it's no longer going to be a contributing structure. And so...
Maybe so, but if it wasn't for me, somebody else would have demoed the whole house.
Possibly. They would have to get permission to demolition. It's in the historic district. It's in a historic overlay, so you can't just tear it down.
Yeah, but I've got plenty of reason why I could tear it down for the work that we have to do to put it, to keep it the way it is.
Fair enough.
That was my question as well, is does he have the option just to demolish it? And then is your argument, well, we'd rather keep some of it, you know, historical, rather than just demolishing it?
I'd rather keep some of it historical rather than just demolish it.
Right.
For a couple of reasons, but...
No offense, but it will not be historic once you put MDF columns and LP siding and vinyl windows, and a new structure would be held to higher standards than that, truthfully.
Based on my limited experience here, I kind of figure none of that is going to work for the board.
I need a clarification. Did you not say that it was in a single-family coded area?
It is a single-family residential area, but the Historic Zoning Commission came along in 2000... I mean, 1984, and it was already converted at that point to a multifamily unit, four units. The individual that bought it in 1985, the paperwork that I received or that we had in our files on that is that it was already converted and had four apartments in it.
So as such, if it were demolished, it would need to be built back as a single-family residence?
No. You... Can we not go?
I cannot defer to Matthew Blomley to speak on this issue. He's the non-conforming guru in the office.
No personal attack.
Not taken. It is in the CCO, and there is a one-time rebuild provision for non-conforming uses in the CCO. So there would be some protections for the existing use there as well. However, you know, we would need to... If that was what ended up happening, Amelia and I would need to flesh that out more, because I don't know that just because the use is non-conforming does not mean that the... Anything else that does not conform, such as if it's non-conforming with respect to parking design or number of parking spaces, that that wouldn't have to be brought up to minimum standards if it was demolished and rebuilt. So all that to say, I think that we would need to do a little bit more research on what would be required if it were a full demo and rebuild. But I think there are some protections in our zoning ordinance in the city core overlay district for legally established non-conforming uses, i.e. grandfathered uses.
And then another consideration, of course, for demolition is that to demolish any building in the historic district, it has to have approval from this body, so they would have to come before this body and meet the guidelines in order to...
How's economic hardship determined on demolition? John, is it based on the value of the property?
No. At least my... I would need to research it more to give you a definitive answer, but my understanding is economic hardship would be if the property was about to fall down on their neighbor's property, for example, or something like that, where, you know, the owner would be at risk of liability if the building were not demolished. But this is nowhere near that state of disrepair. It clearly needs a lot of work, but it's not purely just the property value, at least that's my understanding.
What if it's uninhabitable because of codes or the floor?
Right. That might rise to that level, but again, I would need to do some targeted research to give you a definitive answer.
I was in the house this morning, and the first question I asked him is, is demolition not an option? It's really in bad shape. And if you look at the foundation pictures, and I agree with everything said here, that we're drifting away from historic integrity on some of these things, but I don't know who might take this project on.
Yeah.
This is Mr. Chambers' wheelhouse. This is what he does.
Why don't we finish discussing the changes you proposed, like the porch? I think you talked about a wood floor or concrete floor. You talked about beadboard ceiling. You talked about putting ceiling recess lights, I believe, in the ceiling of the porch.
In the soffit.
I'm sorry?
In the soffit.
Oh, in the soffit, okay. And bricking in where the lattice is, is there anything else related to the porch itself that you want to bring to the commission?
Like how it sits now? The brick, the bricks, they're not on any footers. It's just in really bad shape, like the siding's pulling away from the house. The doors are coming away like it.
Let's focus right now on the porch itself, so we can get that under our belts that we understand it well. So are you going to replace the brick piers when you do the skirting?
Yeah, I'm going to put it on the footer, you know, dig a footer and then put brick and make it...
Well, currently, the brick piers are pronounced because there's lattice between them. Would you then make the brick... Make the effect of the brick look like there's still a pier there, and then recess maybe the infill to where the piers pop out?
No, sir.
Should we go now to the win... Are there not any other questions? Should we go to the windows?
Sure.
Can you describe the windows that you plan to remove and replace?
One of them, one of the window... Or one of the door... Wait. The door to the upstairs that's got the staircase, I want to take the staircase down. It will look like a single family when I'm done. You won't know that it's multi. But right there, I was just going to replace the door with the window.
And that was an obvious change later on when it was turned into multiple apartments.
Yeah.
And you're going back in with vinyl windows everywhere?
And set for the two front windows. Said I was going to use wood.
And what about the dormer window?
The dormer window on the front door?
At the back.
On the front? Is it the back or the front?
It's front.
There's one on the front and the back. There it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, you're going with all vinyl windows except the two wood ones under the front porch?
Yes.
But you're filling in the one that's the stained, so-called stained glass window with siding?
Yes.
So everything is vinyl except for those two windows on the front porch?
And the one on the far right where the addition was done on the wraparound porch on the east side, that window in the front, he'll cover as well, is what he's proposing.
But that window in the dormer, Brad, the one, the dormer in the front, that's going to be...
I have a window in there. Yes, I have a window in the...
And it'll be the pella, right?
But a vinyl window.
Not the vinyl window, the... What's the... It'll be the wooden window, that front dormer, right?
We can put a wood window in the front.
Yeah.
So the three, the three front windows would be wood.
Yeah, of course, yes. I'm sorry, I'm jumping around here. This is a lot. It's hard to follow. I think the application was well done, by the way, but it's hard to follow.
We talked about the porch. We talked about the windows. I'm not trying to take over this meeting, but...
No, please do.
I'm trying to get it in groups so we can understand it better, then we can come back and vote it in groups, because otherwise, we'll be doing each window, each door, and that's just going to be, we'll be here 10 o'clock. The front doors, you want to change from a single to a double with a transom?
Yes, sir.
And that's just for an aesthetic thing? And then the door at the top of the ladder on the east side is going to be filled in?
Will be removed.
The door on the porch that you want to remove is going to be changed into siding or a window?
Siding. There's a window over on that side, but I believe, but yeah, just fill in the door.
And though we can't see the rear of your structure, would that door be replaced?
Um...
We can't vote on that, so I'm just telling you now. You can't see it. It's just general...
I think I need egressets for the back, so...
With that many people. So you circulate inside, whereas you have the steel ladder on the east side of the building, everybody will come in the front doors and then go upstairs to their apartments?
There'll be a new staircase to the upstairs.
And that's where you'll deal with building codes as far as a protected stair or whatever it's going to have to be, and exit lights and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Whatever code requires. Is there any other grouping we're not talking about?
The roof.
The roof, the shingles?
Yeah, the metal roof versus the asbestos. We haven't touched on that yet.
Can you describe that for us and tell...
Standing seam on the porch.
Standing seam metal roof.
Can we on our monitors here go to what the roofing is proposed to be?
He's going to be putting basically architectural shingles on the roof itself, the main house, and then he's going to put the standing seam aluminum on the porch and the dormer. And the porch is flat pretty much right now, so...
That's the... That's the last, isn't it, the roof? That's the...
We haven't talked about the gutters and downspouts. That's part of the roof, as far as I'm concerned.
We can do that with the roof, can't we?
Yeah.
I think there was also lighting in the porch, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
Say again, John?
Lighting on the porch. I'm not sure if we touched on that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the scotch lights now.
And then the front porch steps removed.
Yeah, I've got the porch siding and the door. What about the roof, Brad? Standing seam, metal roof?
Yes, sir.
Is that historically...
Well, it's a flat, it's a flat roof, so he can't get a warranty on a flat asbestos shingle roof there.
Yeah.
It probably was rolled asphalt roofing on there at one point, but since nobody can really see it except whoever looks out that dormer, I don't have any heartburn over that. Anything with that lowest slope needs to be taken into account, the warranty issue.
Yeah.
There won't be any changes to that pitch at all, right? It's just going to be replaced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gutters and downspouts, I'm looking for that sample.
There you go.
Six inch, yep.
While we're on the roof, Mr. Chairman, the two chimneys, did I understand they're going to be taken out and replaced or not replaced?
Replaced. What will they be replaced with? They're masonry now?
They are.
And what are you going back with?
Uh, brick.
So you're going to take the chimney down below the roof, then...
Yeah, it'll just be for looks.
Build on top of it?
It'll just be for looks, yeah, the chimney up top. Just sit on top of the roof.
But they'll be supported by the old masonry chimneys that are there now?
No, sir.
You won't... I don't think code allows you to build masonry on top of wood.
Well, I haven't done that before, so I'm not 100% sure, but either way, they'll look like, if they don't use brick, it'll look like brick, and you'll never know the difference.
I don't know that we can vote on that without knowing the code issue, that you can... At least in Nashville, you cannot build brick on top of wood. It has to be supported by masonry.
Let's start making some progress on some motions here. Can we get a motion to approve anything? I think we've hit all the bases, haven't we? Haven't we, Amelia? We've touched on all the...
We've touched on them.
We didn't really touch on the lighting. Can we look at that in a little more detail and then vote?
Yep.
Sure.
You said on the front porch, it would be in the soffit. You mean the overhang beyond the porch beam? And is it going to light up the face of the columns?
Yes, sir.
Why not put it inside the ceiling of the porch?
Because I don't think that would look that good, really, but... And it's already got two lights on each side of the door, and then it's got the hanging lights underneath the porch.
So how will they change?
But it doesn't have any lights right now. I'm adding those.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said you had some hanging ones, so you're saying...
I'm going to add hanging lights.
You're proposing that.
Yes.
And do we have a photograph of what you're proposing for the hanging ones?
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't read the hanging. That's my fault. I apologize. And the soffit lights, they'll have that black trim? What is the... We don't normally get into colors, but will the overhang, the porch fascia and columns will be painted black?
White or black.
That's a vogue right now. I can't wait for it to move on to another vogue. I think it's going to look horrible, but is that what you want to do?
Either white or black. I think it's white.
Okay, so it's just, that's just an example, but it would be white. And then you have these what look like gas fixtures, but they're electric. Will they have bottoms to those hanging fixtures and the mounted ones? Because bugs are going to get in there somehow, and they're just going to sit there.
Yeah, it has a bottom. Those have bottoms.
I would highly to recommend to you that you don't put a bottom in them, because the bugs will be in there, and nobody gets in there and changes them, cleans them out.
You're saying open bottom?
An open bottom is better. I just, that's my advice, but it's your... If you're going to manage the place, you can go there and clean out the dead bugs. Is there anything else?
So are you leaning toward the hanging or the mounted, Brad?
Well, the mounted ones go on each side of the door, on the front door, and then the hanging ones would be placed by the windows.
Between each column, pair of columns, or just like three or four on the porch?
There'd be two, two.
Two hanging ones?
Yes, sir.
How tall is that ceiling on the porch?
If I had to guess, probably nine foot.
Okay. And how long is the chain? Because I see that those lights are...
I mean, the chains are adjustable.
The lights are 13 inches. It's not going to have much chain if you want to walk on them.
It actually looks like it's more like 19 inches.
It skipped around too quickly for me to check the dimensions. It looked, I thought they were 13.33.
I think it gave two different size options.
I'm going to get to the picture that I have of a ceiling shot.
Well, hold on to the light fixture itself. Go back. You're going too quick for me to stop.
There we go.
They're 13 and a quarter inches high. So if you've got a nine-foot ceiling... So if you got a nine-foot ceiling.
Those are the ones that. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Did I read the wrong ones? I'm sorry. Yes, which, are you going the medium ones or the large ones?
Medium.
So it's sixteen and a half, thank you for catching that. I think it'll have two lengths, and that's about it.
Sixteen.
You know, say you do seven feet, and then you've got a foot.
Sixteen inches?
Eight foot, uh, four, and so you've got, if it's, if it's nine feet, you've got eight inches. That includes the canopy and hanging it. I used to be able to do math a lot quicker, but I, yeah, I would recommend you check that.
Are we trying to bundle the lighting in with the porch?
Uh, with the, uh, yes, with the porch and the gutters and downspouts in with the roof.
Downspouts round or rectangle?
Thank you.
Okay.
Are they gonna be rectangular or round?
Rectangular.
Well, there's a number of items in this porch. If we want a motion for the porch, it's gonna entail a lot of different pieces.
And we're gonna have to go slow for that young lady to be able to write it all down.
Yes.
You may have to repeat it back to us when we ramble.
I, I don't know if I could make a motion that's gonna be suitable for the applicant. I'm feeling the reveal of the siding needs to stay consistent, the design of the columns needs to stay consistent, the design of the porch that wraps around to the left needs to stay the same. Soffit lighting is inappropriate for this house. The windows need to be wooden. The lighting, otherwise, is fine.
So, on the house, when I did Ford, Ford Four East College, I've got soffit lights, I've got seven-inch reveal. I've got, um, the, the columns, the, made out of MDF.
Those columns weren't fluted to begin with, were they?
Um.
I think they were square, and the soffit lighting could have slipped past us, for sure, but, um, and, and that's a minor detail, it's not that visible. I'm, I'm more hung up on the, the shape of the porch.
Yeah.
And the reveal of the siding, and the columns themselves. Those are distinct architectural elements of this house, and changing those just wholly changes this house.
One thing we haven't really discussed is the, the request for either concrete slab or wood floor for the porch. I think we need to vet that before we make a motion.
A slab. I have trouble with, this, this is a wooden porch. I would assume before this lattice was added, it was just an open-air porch. The piers are an important architectural part of this. And there should be a foundation wall under the house, under the porch there. So I'm a little indifferent about the bricks around, as if the, if the columns, the brick columns themselves could be highlighted. I understand the need for support in the, in the brick. But again, I think I'm, I'm proposing so many changes, I'm gonna have a hard time making a motion.
I, I think the only way for this journey is to start with a single item.
You don't start with the roof?
I think, no, I think we start on the porch, and from the ground up, and get to the wall of the porch with the siding and the windows, and then we go to the other parts.
Okay. We're gonna do this line item at a time?
Well, I, I, I don't wanna do, you know, brick piers, then do roll call, and then, then do wood floor roll call. I'd rather we group it together, but be very distinct in what we're approving.
I think some of them can be grouped together, like this page right here, I think all of tho, those three things can be, that has to do with the wraparound porch, the left-side wood window changed to vinyl, and the door removed and covered with siding.
Are you saying a page at a time, so to speak? Are you suggesting a page at a time?
Well, I know these three can go together. I tried to group them, kinda the best I could. Um, yeah, then this one could go together.
And the fronts, the front steps, are you, you're changing what appears to be concrete into brick? Is that correct?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
The front steps with the cheek walls, are you changing that all to brick?
Yes.
And then widening them. Widening the steps.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
I'd like to make the following motion, that the siding can be replaced, but must remain at the five-inch reveal. That on the sides of the house, the replacement of windows may be vinyl, but in the front, underneath the porch and the shed must be wood. Doors may be, if they're on the sides of the house, replaced or covered. The roof, uh, for the porch may be standing seam. The porch itself be a wooden floor. The brick piers remain and accented, whether that means replacing the lathe or putting in a brick and creating a back step to it, so that the vertical piers remain. The columns that are square and fluted, eh, for maintenance purposes, they may be replaced, but have to be replaced with like-minded, exactly. The front door remain as is, a single door with a flat transom above. Uh, light fixtures are still debatable, as far as the porch is concerned. The ceiling in the porch can become a beadboard. And I think I've got.
That's amazing.
Oh, the stained glass window, I think the stained glass window should remain.
I don't, I don't think that stained glass window is original at all. That is definitely an afterfact.
Then, in my proposal, we can make it debatable. We can discuss that later, then.
I did do research on houses of this timeframe, and stained glass was one of the things that they did put at these homes.
So I think the stained glass should remain, so.
Is it in good repair, Brad, the stained glass?
Um.
I mean, you can't really reframe it.
Can we look at a picture on, on, on our monitors, the stained glass?
Yeah.
This is real stained glass?
Mm-hmm.
It's not, uh, some sort of?
Film.
Film applied? Are you sure?
I don't know, I don't, I mean.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
What kind of condition is the trim in, though? I mean, don't we understand that to, to replace that trim?
With transoms also stained glass besides the window?
Okay, a very long proposal, but.
I, I think it's amazing.
I think I got all the parts.
It's amazing, but the stained glass.
Can you read back the motion, so we know what we're voting on, please? I'm sorry, ball's in your court.
And speed up.
Well, I don't think I got all of it, but.
We'll, we'll, we'll help you along.
Okay, so the siding can be replaced, but the five-inch reveal must remain. The side windows may be replaced with vinyl. The windows on the front would have to be wood.
Including the shed.
Okay.
Yeah, shed dormer.
Okay. The metal staircase and the doors on the sides of the house may be removed. The roof for the front porch can be standing seam. The brick piers remain and, are to be highlighted. The columns should remain square and fluted. The front door should remain single. Stained glass should remain.
I'm impressed.
And, and the light fixtures?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I think the light fixtures have to be tabled, they're, they're not in the motion.
And Ashley, did you get the ceiling in the, on the porch can be beadboard? I believe that was another part of the motion.
I think he requested wooden beadboard.
No, 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 it is beadboard now, and he requested it to be tongue-in groove, four-inch tongue-in groove.
Oh, I'm sorry, it needs to remain beadboard.
Right, now it's four by sheets. It's four by eight sheets.
And what do you wanna go back with?
Wood.
No, is it tongue-in groove planks?
No, it's four by eight sheets.
That's what you wanna put up?
No, that's what it has right now.
I'm asking, what do you wanna replace the sheets with?
Wood, tongue-in, tongue-in groove.
Yeah, there's four, it's plywood, it's pine right now.
But it's a plank, it's not beadboard.
It's like cheap four by eight sheets that look like, I don't know what you want me to say.
Beadboards, they got a beadboard pattern, but they don't.
But, but here's the question, so you have four by eight sheets, you're gonna take it down, you're gonna go back with individual boards?
Yes.
Tongue-in groove, what is the face of it? Is it beadboard, or is it individual beadboard boards?
Probably beadboard, like the, the one by fours.
Okay, so that's, so beadboard.
Okay, we want beadboard.
Yeah, that's.
That would be what the period would have, not the place.
That's right.
Is that on, in your notes now?
I just have one point of clarification. The main, the main roof?
We hadn't included that in this motion, yeah.
Is that going to be replaced with shingles, or?
Yes, sir.
Just the, the standing seam on the porch roof?
Standing seam, I'm just talking about the.
And the dormer.
That's your plan, right, Brad? Standing seam over the porch and asphalt.
And the dormer.
And the dormer, and asphalt.
Of dormers.
Asphalt on the, okay.
Architectural.
Thank you.
And you wanna add to it your?
We okay with that.
The gutters and downspouts?
Okay, but I'm lost now.
No, you're good.
We would like gutters and downspouts, but.
Traditional, modern, and the rectangular downspouts is what we.
Okay, traditional, modern, and rectangular downspouts. I think that's what you had suggested.
And prefinished aluminum?
I believe that's it.
Uh, can I ask for clarification on the motion? You, well, we wanna make sure that we're clear on what it is we're, we're voting for.
I'm trying really hard.
Absolutely.
You're doing great.
You see what you did?
I, I, I believe you had said, uh, that the doors and the sides of the house may be removed.
He needs to remove them.
Make clear it's on, on, on both sides of the porch, so the one on the left side wraparound, as well as the one on the newer addition?
I think the doors are, yeah.
There's two on the.
Right, there's upstairs, there was a new addition, and.
Do we know yet by code, if you're gonna do still multi-family in there, are those required exits?
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna say yes.
If they're required exits?
No, 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 on the sides, no.
Okay, just the front door and the rear doors require exit. So they could be, but.
And they're not, since they're on the sides and off the front.
Yeah, they're not original.
And then that way he can go ahead and put the, um.
Siding over the.
Siding, thank you for the word, over it.
Did I answer your question?
I, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the motion, that we're, we're talking about both sides, and the answer is yes.
Oh, we want it clear.
Yes, sir.
Ashley, if you don't mind, let's read back one more time, okay?
Okay. So siding can be replaced with a five-inch reveal. The side windows, vinyl, the front windows, wood, including the shed dormer. Metal staircase and doors on the sides may be removed. Roof for porch can be the standing seam. Brick, brick piers remain and highlighted. Columns should remain square and fluted. The front door should remain a single door. Stained glass window to remain. The, uh, the porch ceiling should be beadboard, and then traditional, modern, square downspouts?
Rectangle.
Rectangle, okay.
Uh, and then there was one addition also, I'm sorry, uh, and that was that the porch should be a wooden floor. That was another part of the motion.
And I hate to keep dragging this on, trust me. Are the windows, the new windows gonna be one over one?
Um, yes.
No mountains?
No what?
No mountains.
What'd you say?
No mountains?
What does that mean?
That's the little dividers that makes it like nine over nine, or six over six.
I mean, I'll do whatever.
Well, what's there now that?
There, there, nothing, there's.
Yeah, they're plating.
What are the ones on the front? I can't tell.
That's, they're plating.
They're one over one, then. So all the rest will be one over one? Because some of them are.
The rest of the windows aren't one over one.
What are you gonna do for those?
I, I mean.
Well.
I think they just bought whatever they could find and put it up there. Because some are six over six, and some are one over one. But the predominant appears to be one over one.
On the front, that's the only ones, I believe. I don't know, we can go through the pictures.
Uh, the rear ones appear to be one over one, where the stairs come down, it appears to be one over one. What's below the stairs, one over one. There's a air conditioning that has six over six.
That's second floor.
That was more likely added.
Those are second floor pictures, yeah.
That's, I think it's.
One over one stuff.
That, that attic would have been altered.
Can we revise our proposal, they just be one over one?
I think we can add that the, the front wooden windows be one over one. Since I, just replace, you know, one over one like they are, and I wanna make sure that we did get single door with flat transom.
Yeah.
What do you mean by flat transom? One piece?
Yeah, just, it's, it's stained glass, but it's flat, and it's not.
No mountains?
No mountains.
It looks like it had mountains.
I don't know.
Good with that motion?
Do we now have the windows in there? One over one? Are we ready to vote?
I'll second, I'll second her motion.
Did you make the motion, Deb? Ashley, you wanna call the roll?
Ms. Anderson?
Um, I.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penasi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
Okay.
What's left? I'm worried about what's left.
Brad, I appreciate you being willing to take on a project like this, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
It's quite a project. I don't envy you.
Is there, is there anything else on this we didn't go over?
I think that's all the new business sitting in the middle.
Well, I'm talking about this, this, this particular item.
Yeah, we still have.
Did that actually get the left side of the porch?
Yeah, the left.
Okay, okay.
What about the stairs?
They came off.
Yeah, that was part of it.
I don't think we talked about the front steps becoming wider.
Why does the left side of the porch have to stay? The right side's been, it's not original. But, I don't understand. Why we have to have the, why I have to keep the wraparound porch? There's no door, there's nothing over there. Why, why does it?
Because it's old, it's historic.
Yeah, but the right side's different.
It was altered before.
That one to stay filled in, but we kept the old one, because we wanna keep it a contributing structure.
I don't think that, for what I'm trying to do, I don't think that makes sense for everybody else. Now you got people pulling in, backing out on the same side. It would flow much nicer if you could pull in and go out around the house.
However, our job is to look at the house as a contributing structure to the historic zone, and that porch, as it stands, is an L. At one time, it would have been a U, but that was changed. We can't make you put it back. So what we're saying is, what is there, please keep it, so that it will remain a contributing structure. If that part of the porch is taken off, it will no longer be contributing to the entire historic zone.
I understand that. But it also was a single family at one point, and now it's multi-family, and I think. I understand that, but it also was a single family at one point, and now it's multi-family, and I think the house should change with time, it's, it's not what it once was.
We don't review the interior, we don't re-review paint color either.
Yeah, but do you review the purpose of the house?
We, we don't care how you use it. You could, you could sell it as a single family house again.
I think we haven't done the asphalt shingle roof.
Yeah, there's a number of items still left.
That's what I want to know what's left.
The, the lighting fixtures were specifically exempted from that motion.
The lighting fixtures.
We have to wait on those.
Main roof shingles, the chimneys, and I don't know what else, that's what I'm asking Amelia if you could help us on what we did not address.
I'm, I'm trying. Let's see, lights were exempted, we got the window, all the vinyl, vinyl windows on the back. Okay, the left side of the porch is remaining.
But the door can be filled in.
But the door can be filled in. Um, stained glass is the window is to stay, the front entry steps replaced with brick.
No, we didn't discuss the steps.
We didn't, we didn't have that in the motion, is my point.
And to clarify, the, the light fixtures are not exempt as in, go pick out what you want, they're just set aside for discussion.
Um, so they could have the brick skirting around the porch, but it needs to be recessed, or made, um.
Accentuated.
Yeah.
The piers accentuated.
Where can go? The wood window that's on the left side of the porch, that's supposed to be wood as well.
One on one.
Okay.
There was the removal of the window on the right side of the porch, that addition?
Yeah, he's covering that, they're covering that.
What, was that part of the motion as well?
I'm not sure that I did or didn't on that particular.
Okay.
I think you said the side windows could, could.
The side windows can be.
Can, can be covered up with, with the siding?
I think that would be appropriate. I think so.
Those ones.
It was a long motion.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think the only thing left are the steps. And, you said the porch columns could be replaced with MDF, a smooth.
No ma'am, exactly the same. Square inflated. Same capital, same basic, replace in exact, if needed, if they're not in bad shape, they can be repaired. But I just said can be, you know, if it's for maintenance purposes.
Okay. Uh, but I believe that's the wind, the lights, the steps, I believe every. And the chimneys, the rear dormer he wanted to discuss, but you're not going to be able, you shouldn't be able to see it, but he's afraid that if he expands it and it's visible from the road, he would like some parameters on that, but we don't really review the back house.
I couldn't see it this morning.
But he's going to expand it.
Yeah, I know.
How much are you going to expand it, triple it, double it?
I don't have an exact measurement, I was going to keep it about three, four feet off the edge.
So, your concern is you expand it and then it comes into view?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to.
Considering that's helping to facilitate the removal of the staircase on the side of the house that is very unsightly, I'd say that's a good.
But it still accentuates the dormer is separate from, that the roof continues down, the ranking board of the roof continues down, and even if it comes three or four feet to the edge, it's still a separate looking dormer.
True.
It's not an extension of the wall below going up, is my point.
Right.
You want, since you did a great job, you want to make a motion?
And about the shed in the back, the shed dormer?
Uh, the shed dormer, the, uh, uh, flues.
Steps.
The steps, and did our motion originally get the asphalt shingle on the roof?
No, we didn't get that, let me get a few things, how about this, how about the shed dormer, however, you, the, you want to make it a little bigger, that that be okay? That it have a standing seam roof as you suggested, the roof itself be the asphalt shingles as suggested. And, and let's start there, because I think we need to talk about the chimneys.
But you need to, I think the motion, I, I recommend you make the motion that the dormer on the rear can be wider, but say three to four feet from the edge of the roof now.
Okay. Okay, the dormer can be wider, but let's keep from either end maybe three feet. That work?
That'll work.
Okay, and then, um, I'd like to let that motion go and then us have a discussion about the other things, if that's okay.
You'll read that one back, Ashley?
Okay, so the shed dormer on the back of the house can be wider, but it needs to keep three feet from the sides. The roof can be standing seam on the dormer, and the roof on the main house can be asphalt shingles.
As suggested.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You clear on the motion, Ashley? John?
Yes, sir.
Clear on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh.
I, I would like to make a motion that the chimneys, I think, need to be, uh, reviewed by the codes department before we make a decision because of the structural understanding of what's going on.
Well, uh, can we ask the applicant, do you intend to take the chimneys, the, the structure that's inside the building envelope, do you intend to remove those?
I do.
Okay, so there will be no structure underneath those existing chimneys, so any chimneys that were to be put back?
I was thinking the faux brick, maybe, I don't know, there's a couple of different options, but it's lightweight, I can frame it, you never know, it'll, it'll look the same. There, the chimneys are hanging on by a thread as they sit right now anyways.
I was going to say, they're probably not very safe right now.
We, we've taken down chimneys before, uh, George and Mary Mayes, for instance, because it was in danger of collapsing.
Sure, I, I know, so maybe.
We can make a conditional one, that we approve of brick veneer.
Brick veneer.
Frame chimneys with a metal cap or something.
Do I have to put the chimneys back? Or something that looks like?
I don't know that you do, uh, what, like Commissioner Thompson just said, we have allowed that in the past to.
Well, but with the understanding they were going to rebuild it, then it never happened, but we did have a review meeting of our guidelines, and we said that chimneys and dormers need to be put back or saved, because you start to lose the verticality on the roof, and I, I highly recommend they need to be put back. I can, I can imagine that the way you want to develop that second floor, that if you took the masonry chimney and the first floor as well, it would impede the design of the apartments. So you could just put these faux chimneys back in the same locations, and at least it looks like you see it from the street. And that, that would be better than not having them, is my point, and they are part of the architectural language, just like the fluted columns.
I think that's kind of what he was going to do, go back with a, with a faux wood.
Yeah, but did you even question?
I mean a faux brick.
That you, do you have to go back with them, and I'm.
Well, yeah, I did ask that question.
I think you did.
I, I think the best, if I have to go back, would be the, the, like the faux brick, like we were saying.
I think that's most appropriate, we, we have had this discussion in the last year about another structure on East Main Street, where we recommended keeping a chimney that was on the back of the house.
Then I'd like to take back my motion.
Okay.
And make a different motion, that you can, you must put the visual understanding of those chimneys back, and do it within codes, but if you need to use a lighter weight material, that would work.
Of the same dimensions and height?
Of the different, yeah, the same exact look, dimensions, height, in other words, it'll look the same, it just won't function.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Does that make sense?
So we've got one motion now on the chimney.
Chimney.
Actually, I don't think you have to read that one back. Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
Well, uh, so lighting, we've not. So, now we can't get a motion on the lighting.
Could we move into the steps, the front steps?
Oh, yeah.
I, I would like to share an opinion that poured concrete steps, probably not period to nineteen ten. Um, so what is there probably should be replaced with brick to match the skirting that we've approved.
But it wouldn't be unusual to have a, the cheek walls with a cap that could be concrete or stone, that the brick, the steps themselves be brick.
Yes, I agree with you. And maintain that, that bit of that book. Uh, it could have been a stucco or something, or applied during that time, it may have been framed of brick and, and coated with, uh, some sort of masonry, but. I would move that the steps could be replaced with brick, using a similar cap on either side to mimic the style that's there. Size? Yeah, the width, I, I, I think mimicking what's there, is this, is this in line with what you're?
You wanted to widen the steps a little bit?
Did you want to widen those? Or did you want to keep that width, because we're talking about keeping the door the same width, the columns need to be spaced similarly, so it, that's going from column to column, I don't see that there's room to widen it, really. But what was the intent of your?
It looked better if they were wider, but also was going to have a French door in the front.
Since we're not going to do the French door.
Yeah, the previous motion was to keep that door a single thirty-six inch door.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, it changed what I initially thought.
Okay, so the motion is to allow the brick steps, the brick skirting, and keep the existing size?
Existing size. And style, but it can be.
Can be brick.
Can be made of brick.
Second.
So Mr. Jakes made, Commissioner Jakes made the motion, Vice Chair Belcher seconded it, and Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
So absent a motion for the approval of this lighting.
I think he could rough it in, and then he could come back with lighting that, once he's sure of where, what it's going to look like.
What's wrong with the lighting I have?
Well, I think one of them, uh, the sixteen inch hanging one's too tall for.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's nine foot, I never measured it, but I did it at the other house.
If you're not sure, you can't present what the actual height is, we don't know that it'll fit.
I, I'm not going to do something somebody's going to hit their head on.
I'd just like to propose that once you get a little further down, maybe you come back with your lighting proposal.
Can I just send it to Amelia, so that I haven't come back to the meeting?
What, if it were what it is now, but there's nothing now, right? There's no lighting now.
There's no lighting.
It, it could be that they, that we, the motion be that we get something similar to what's presented, and the height varied based on the actual ceiling.
And that, that could be subject to administrative.
That could be.
Yes, sir.
What about the soffit lights? Again, Mike, what about the soffit lights? They didn't get, I don't, don't think, I mean, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Yeah, it comes down to the motion.
Okay, hearing none.
Let me lean on our architect.
Question about new lighting, could we go over that again, what are you saying?
Well, I, I had questions about the soffit lighting, but applicant makes a great point that he has soffit lighting in another house, it's not altering the look of the house necessarily. But I'm, it's a gray area for me, um, we're trying to retain the architectural integrity of this house. Now, that would show it off beautifully at night, it's a great feature, so I'm, I'm a little indifferent on, on the use of that.
And certainly if there was a house built before there was electricity, right, we would allow them that, lights.
Mm-hmm.
You might, you might want lights on your front porch.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I'm like Bill, I'm a little inclined to, uh, give some leeway there because of the improvements he's making to this piece of property, I know, not even sure unless you get real close that they'll be visible from the right way.
I think I can make a motion here, I, I would move to approve the lighting as submitted, as long as there's at least eight foot clearance from the floor height of the porch to the bottom of the hanging light fixtures.
Second.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay, Ashley, call the roll.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penessi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
Chair Davis, just one quick, uh, suggestion, the applicant did ask about the administrative approval, in case the, uh, lights end up not complying with that. If you would like to make a motion to allow that, you can, but that's, that's entirely your choice, of course.
I think my motion would dodge the need for administrative approval, as long as he meets that clearance.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Amelia, is there anything else?
I have a clarification, the front door, the front door is to be a single door with a transom.
Just like it is, just like it is now.
This door's going to be utilized, or are we, are we?
If it's replaced.
We don't have anything to show what it will be replaced with.
Right, the design.
Brad, if you replaced it with another three, what would you, what would, what style would you use?
Just a nice looking wood door. Uh, see what we have.
It's a, it's, it's got Victorian detailing.
Yeah, it's got, it would have to be like this door, this door can either be kept, it can be repaired and kept, or it can be replaced with like.
Are you worried about security with that door?
Oh, that door, there's no, there's no fixing that door, I think if you went and actually like walked the property, you'd be a little more lenient on.
One thing I did see this morning, and he makes a good point, they've had to move the, uh, door latch twice because the porch is moving away from the house. And, and they've had to, they couldn't move the door, it was separating, and so they've had to add different latches, that.
So you'll need a new casing and everything on this door?
Yeah, and, uh. I doubt it, you.
Yeah, you're not going to find that door, that would have to be specially made. And that would need to be tempered glass to meet modern code.
I basically just wanted the single door with the transom, and the fact that it is a glass door.
Can it have side lights?
No. It shouldn't, it doesn't have it now. That wasn't part of this house.
I understand that.
Well, let's, uh, let's, let me ask for a motion then to replace existing door with like.
Door. I think that's what the original motion was.
Yeah.
I just simply wanted the verticality, and I said with like. If you read the...
So we're clear, don't we? We cleared the door then, right, Amelia?
I just wanna know if I'm the one that's supposed to pick what's he's putting there, 'cause that's, that's one of the big things about not replacing doors.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you all will have to approve that.
What does the motion say? I think I said with like.
With like kind, yeah, but I...
My, my notes are just that the front door would remain single door with flat transom. So to be clear, I, I would suggest maybe making a motion specific to the front door, if you'd like it to be replaced with like kind.
I don't think he can find that door anywhere.
You might get a preservation station in Nashville.
But current codes, it would have to have, you're correct, tempered glass, so... I think if it's the similar look, but it meets today's codes, maybe I can change my motion slightly, that it still has the same, when I say look, I'm talking about the shape, not necessarily the detail work.
I, I don't want to do this to the applicant, but I think that when, when we're talking about that kind of aesthetic look, and, and I, I, I will note that the applicant's prior property that became non-contributing as a result of the remodel, one of the, one of the, um, uh, factors that was cited by the Historic Commission was the new doors. So, given that, I would suggest that if the applicant does want to replace the door, it would probably have to come back to this body, I don't think it could be administrated.
I, I kept my door. My front door, my door is the same on, at the other house. That door's from the...
I, I, then it's possible it's a different door, but what they cite, at least what I see here is alterations to the building includes new doors, siding wi- windows and columns.
No, sir, it's the side front door.
Looking at the before and after, he sure did keep the...
He kept the front door.
And I'm not so sure why that made this...
Well, there was a door on the left side.
That, that was added after because it was changed to a duplex, and I put it back to a single family.
And replace that, those doors with windows on your, on four forty?
I think we can say we want a similar door with the same amount of glass, and it meets code and a panel below that mimics the design of the original, and that gives enough parameter to find a door that's similar. Because I would hate to say a glass and wood door, because the glass can then be this tall.
Right, yeah. Amelia, is that sufficient detail for you to administratively approve?
Okay, so it must have tempered glass, no side lights, single transom, replaced with like, meaning same size with long windows...
Window.
Window. Long window, and decorative bottom, panel.
Decorative panel below. Whether it has the teeth or whatever that detail is, I can't really tell, the picture's not clear. I don't know that that's a hundred percent...
I would rather have a solid wood door with a small transom at the top, or windows.
That would be changing the look of what, the historic nature of it, and it could start to cause problems of being listed. You're buying houses to renovate that have protections on them, and you want to change them to be something you like, whereas this board has to do it based on the rules we have. And you can't change it to little tiny view windows up above that some people can see and some shorter people can't.
Really what I'm doing, I'm saving what was there, but...
You're, you're not saving the door or the look of the door. It's a different philosophy. You, you, if you bought houses outside this district, you could do whatever you want within the kind of "we can't do that." That's the problem.
I think there's guidelines, and you should give me a little leeway on the front door.
It could take approval by this commission, then approved by the council, we can't just say we can do that. We have to interpret the laws that are set up by the, the council, and the Secretary of Interior standards for preservation. It's an unfortunate thing, but you're buying properties that have covenants that create this problem for you.
And to be honest, we're trying to work out where you can have a new door, but it has a similar look.
Yeah.
I mean, I couldn't save that door in the first place, but...
I didn't hear you say...
I said I couldn't save that door in the first place. It, it won't even shut. I mean, it's totally...
If it can't be repaired or replaced, then what I said, similar. So we're trying to, 'cause you have contemporary codes that are gonna make you put tempered glass in. So we're trying to make it where, okay, we realize it may look a little different, but it still should have that linear look to it with the, the large glass, and, and maybe a panel at the bottom. And the, the decorative piece, as, uh, was mentioned with the teeth, we can understand how you might not be able to find that. So we're trying to go with a, with a door that will shut, that will work for you, that you can find, and it does meet code. We're trying to move forward with a similar, but one that meets code.
And, and the guidelines.
And the guidelines.
Is that another motion?
I don't know.
We got a motion with the door, we're just trying to clarify it for Amelia.
I said like door, so like it.
Especially with the windows, I think, being one, what'd you call it?
One over one.
One over one.
Means just one pane of glass in the upper sash and one pane in the lower sash.
Really does match that front door with the long length.
I have another quick question about the door piece, too, because there's a storm door on there, so what, what does that do? Is that something allowed?
I don't have an issue with the storm door.
Okay.
Um, I, I would request that the motion be stated just clearly for the record, and I would also suggest that if you do want Amelia to be able to administratively, administratively approve the replacement door, rather than making the applicant come back, that you include that in the motion, please.
Does that mean me?
I, I, I will say, I, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Vice Chair. I, I would just wanted to clarify, you don't need to go through all the requirements of what like means. I, I think you've done that sufficiently for Amelia's purposes. You could just say with a like door, just to make it easier for you.
I can do that, okay.
That's good.
We will, I, I would like to propose that we retain the understanding of a like door, and that we provide, that meets code, that, and we provide Amelia the administrative, uh, opportunity to go ahead and approve that.
I think that's sufficient, yeah.
With the same amount of glass and the panel below.
Like, same amount.
We, we, we just did that for clarification purposes, we've already passed that motion, right?
Uh, no, sir. Uh, the, the prior motion was just a front door, the transom not requiring it to be a like front door, and so this would be a motion for a like.
So I need a second.
Second.
Second from, uh, Brian. Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
I'm seconding the roll.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penasi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye, sorry.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
Okay, have we covered?
What about ten twenty seven East Main? That last item, was it? I believe with, uh, changing of the wording for the porch light, and me doing the administrative approval of the door, I think we're good.
Do we wanna, does anybody wanna make a motion on the soffit lights? I know they're not period, and I know that.
I, I included as submitted on the lighting.
You did? Okay, good. So we're good, we're good on it, Amelia?
Yes, he gets to have all the lighting as long as it's eight feet off the floor.
Um, I hate to say anything else, one of the items you mentioned earlier was that the side window could be replaced and covered over vinyl, but that's in there, I think, just wanted to make sure.
Covered over with wood siding.
With wood.
Yeah, like covered.
I think she got that in her first motion. Okay, good.
But that all the front windows needed to be wood, if I recall correctly?
And the one under the porch and one in the armor.
There was also a front window on that extension, which was proposed to be...
So it's four and then...
I think it's getting covered over.
Right.
Yeah, the one on the left side I'd asked about, y'all said y'all wanted it wood, too, under the porch.
Under the porch, oh.
I thought that was...
Two under the porch and one under the, uh, shed dormer, be wood. And the one that's in that new addition, that can be covered over.
The one on the left side, where the door is, the door's gonna be covered, and that one, the one under the porch on the side can be vinyl.
Yeah, 'cause we don't see that part. Doesn't that make sense? No?
It is visible from the right way.
The right away.
So what did that original motion say, that, with the windows? Sorry.
I just thought the two ends.
Usually the long things.
That the side windows could be vinyl, and the front windows, um, would be wood, and one over one in the shed dormer would be wood.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Talk about them.
I'm good with that.
Well, our logic for approving vinyl on the side is because it's replacing vinyl.
Yeah.
That's what's already there.
Brad, how much room do you think you got between that left porch and that fence? You think that fence is on the property line? Have you put a tape on that?
I'm not sure whether, I haven't had the property surveyed, so I'm not sure where, where that fence is at.
Okay.
It's not much.
It's pretty close, pretty tight.
But it looks like the driveway on the right is there.
Yeah.
It appears the driveway on the right is on your property.
I do have the driveway, a very slim driveway on the right.
Where's the driveway for four thirty-seven, Brad? Is it under the trees?
Um...
Oh, you don't have that on.
The one to the left?
Yeah, the one to the left, is it, is, is it, isn't there driveway on that side?
I don't think the trees would block it.
I think there's a street park.
There is a...
Yeah.
Yep.
There is one, yeah.
Okay, there is.
It's a gravel.
Is it, is it multifamily, too, the one, is that a duplex?
This is a duplex.
That one.
What's that, Amelia?
That is a duplex next door.
Can you do the aerial again? Yeah, there's a driveway with a parking pad in the back, I mean, keeping that le- left side porch as is, I don't see it's creating a hardship for you.
Well, yeah, when you've got four plus people living there, coming in and out different times, like, it's just...
Well, they may, you know...
It would just, it would, and that's a lot of traffic on the house next door.
That they already live with every day.
Yeah.
What about, what about, since we're redoing the porch anyways, why does it have to stay eight feet wide?
West porch.
The west side, yeah.
That's because it's what it is.
That's what it was, is door.
Yeah. Okay, is that all the new business, Amelia?
What was the, 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 did you do a motion on the brick steps? And that, so the stone, the, the, what did you call those gem, the things on...
Cheek walls.
Cheek walls?
Skirt.
Like your cheeks.
Same thing, skirt wall.
That's brick.
The lattice, right?
It's brick.
Where the lattice is, is what you call skirt wall.
And the steps and the cheek walls would be brick.
Yeah. Same size as, as they are now.
That would, that would be brick.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Ashley will work on all that.
Okay, Brad, thanks again. Your application is very well done.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you being willing to tackle the project. Anything else, uh, Amelia?
Other business? As you say, we had one, since the last time we met, we had one administrative approval.
Mm-hmm.
To replace a front porch that was fallen in, and they're replacing it with like for like. It's just porch floor, not the, not the railings, not, or the, the columns, all of the decorative stuff is staying the same. Also, wanted to mention, all of you should be getting emails now from the NAPC that's giving you opportunities to watch, um, any type of webinars that they have. They've been having quite a few, uh, every month now. Uh, the next one that's coming up would be really interesting, probably a good one to do. It's a two-part series, the first part is, it's called Through the Pain. Uh, first part is Thursday, April seventeenth, and...
I think we already did that one today.
Oh. Well, April seventeenth, that, my, it says it's Thursday, April seventeenth.
No, I'm joking.
Oh, about today. Sorry. Yeah, I, I wish we'd had this before, but I, I, this is something I've been asking for, um, through the group, asking them for some more information on figuring out how to determine what windows can be replaced and what can't. So Thursday, April thir- April seventeenth is going to be evaluating historic windows, how to assess their condition, how to evaluate replacement options. Then the second one will be part two, and it will be on April twenty-ninth. And that one will be on insights on window review and updating design guidelines to accommodate replacement windows. So that's an opportunity, these classes are free for anybody that's a member, and all of you all, because you are on this committee, are listed with this in our organization, so you would be able to take these classes for free. When you get the email, it'll give you a code. When you go in to register, just put that code, when it asks for your credit card, and it'll give you a zero balance.
Okay.
That's all I have for today.
I want to commend the commission today, this was a very thorough, difficult meeting, but I think everybody did great, great motion there, Deborah, Vice Chair Belcher. I will ask now for a, a motion to adjourn.
Some of...
Second.
Anxious.
Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Jakes?
Aye.
Mr. Penasi?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Belcher?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman.